Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the November 8th, 2023 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Item one on the agenda is the first selectman's remarks. And I'll get myself going here, sorry. "On Tuesday, November 7th, the town of Woodbridge participated in a very important and consequential election. Congratulations to those who were successful candidates this past Tuesday. Thank you to all who put their names forward to run for election. It is not an easy path to run, as I know. Voting is one important way we can participate in our democracy. There are many to thank, as it takes a great effort on the part of many to hold an election. I thank first all the voters who were patient in line, respectful of the process, and courteous to the election officials and other voters. Thanks also go out to the wonderful election officials, our town clerks, registrars of voters, poll workers, absentee ballot counters, police officers, and fire department volunteers. All these folks worked very hard to make sure our election was conducted efficiently, smoothly, and most importantly, according to the law. I look forward to transitioning our town government into new hands. Our annual Veterans Day ceremony will be held this Friday, November 10th, at 11:00 a.m. in the Center Gym. Everyone in our town is invited to attend this wonderful ceremony coordinated by Dr. Barry Josephs. As President John F. Kennedy once said, quote, "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them." The town of Woodbridge offers veterans and their families who have questions or need help accessing veteran services assistance through the Human Services Department. I thank all of those who made the renaming ceremony at the Karen A. Lombardi Woodbridge Regional Animal Control, a lovely event. Thank you as well to our dedicated building maintenance staff, animal control staff, Jerry Shaw, elected officials, and others who made the event memorable. And just a reminder, as we approach cooling temperatures in the winter months, the Woodbridge Human Services manages applications for fuel assistance, and residents should apply and should stay connected to current information by signing up at the website for weather closings and other alerts. During extreme weather events, the town is well-prepared with an emergency shelter, and our police and fire department are ready to help anyone in need. Thank you. And with that, I will move on to item two, the Woodbridge Board of Education Superintendent Von Kenz is here this evening. Step up. Nice to see you. Welcome.
This is one of the highlights of my month.
You gotta get a life.
I have a very full life, believe it or not.
Only joking, only joking.
And this is still a highlight. So I also wanted to congratulate not only the successful nominees for the positions and to recognize that it must be mostly sweet, but a little bit bittersweet for, you know, for you, for Selectman Heller, to realize that your work, you know, here is coming to a close, but I don't anticipate that your volunteerism is.
I'm not leaving town, I promise.
Correct. So I also want to recognize the people that stepped up to volunteer and maybe were not successful this time around, right? We encourage our children at Beecher Road School, you know, as I had a professor say, what good is a neck if not for to stick it out? And so it was very wise advice.
I have to remember that.
And you had many people in our community willing to stick their necks out and try, and I think that that's something of which to be very proud. So congratulations to all. You know, our enrollment is actually down a little bit. We had a few families move out of town and so into different states, not different towns in Connecticut. So in October, we reported 885, that is our state benchmark. We are at 877 with a few more looming on their way in, so it will hover. We did just this week receive an updated enrollment projection report through 2030, which I will share, you know, with you. I think it's important that you have it as well. It continues to be fairly accurate with our projections. It's completed by Peter Proudie. He tends to be a little bit on the conservative side with most districts, and in fact, in typical Woodbridge fashion, we exceed his expectations. So that is good to know. Also, to keep you current, right, so I do my role as to not only celebrate what were happening in the school, but also to keep you current with what we're doing. So our ad hoc committee recommendations regarding space utilization, these are separate than the roof incursion grounds water project. They're kind of two separate things, and I think it's important for the community to keep that in their mind. So our space utilization study recommendations asked us to go out and try to put together an RFP/ Q for qualifications and proposals. We did meet with one group, and then we, you know, the board suggested we meet with another. We met with another one last week, so we have a couple of different proposals, and we are continuing, we've kind of been refining our questions and working back through those groups. We spoke to one of the two groups this morning and reached out to another one this afternoon, trying as closely as we can to compare apples to apples before making any decisions. And we continue to have those conversations with Beth and Tony on a monthly basis, to keep you apprised. So in that same conversation, I just want to point out that, you know, the roof and the drainage and the sidewalk repairs, those are repairs. I wouldn't even necessarily call those improvements. Those are larger scale capital repairs that are outside of our operating budget capacity. So we are discussing with the town, Beecher Committee, various ways to approach that and get the funding for it, but they are large enough, we do an excellent job with the in-house maintenance best we can in a variety of ways, but those are large enough items where we will need to partner with the town to determine ways to fund those outside of the operating budget. And, you know, I just encourage the community, Beecher Road School is one of your most amazing assets, and it's very important and necessary to maintain and truly to apply a vision to improve it as well as maintain it. Budget has begun, and so this week, we met as a team, Donna Kuhn and our Business Operations Director, Vito Espira, our Director of Facilities. We reviewed a variety of previous facility proposals, older capital project proposals, and we are becoming very close to creating a capital improvement plan over multi-years to share with our subcommittees, our board, and with you. So we are knee-deep in that work. Our district-level budget sheets have been distributed, and we are meeting with our departments over the next two weeks. So we are one of the first towns in the state, really. Our timeline is very early. I met with several superintendents this morning and was quite envious. Their timeline is a little bit later, like maybe January. Last week, we held a community conversation at Beecher Road School. Our entire administrative team was present, the principal, the two assistant principals, the Director of Pupil Services, myself, the Director of Business Operations, and it was an informal, open communication. A few people were a little shaken by, you know, what does open look like? Open looks like whatever you want to talk about. We had 19 people attend. We had two board members, Lynn Piazek and Stephen Lawrence, and they listened. We listened, and people talked about a variety of wonderful topics and expressed appreciation for this opportunity to talk with each other as well as with us. So I do believe that we had parents and members talking to each other outside of the circles that they would normally be meeting with. So we felt very successful about that. I also want to share that next week, I'll be going to the CADE CAPS convention, and very pleased to share that our Board of Education has been selected as a Level One CADE Recognition Board recipient. So that really is a wonderful thing. CADE believes that boards and superintendent that exhibit effective leadership and work together as teams should be recognized, so we are recognized along with six or seven other districts. I'll send those to you so you can see who the districts are, but that's kind of a little feather in their cap, and again, it's just one more indicator and evidence that we have a board that's very highly functioning. Something that may not really belong here, but I am going to bring it to your attention because it does impact our community, is the legislative change in kindergarten entrance. So they did change at the legislative level the age for which a kindergartner can enter our school. It went from January 1st to September 1st. So we do have a pocket of people, of which we're still studying, who had planned on perhaps sending their child to school and maybe are now not eligible for one more year. There's a little bit of a burden of childcare on them. We are waiting for guidance from the state. The state is saying that they're not really going to give guidance, and it's up to each district in terms of whether to let the children in or not if they request a waiver. So I am actually working with the Boa District, because it's important, as we feed into AMITI, it's important, in my opinion, that our assessment criteria is as closely aligned as possible so that all of our children that are entering our middle and high school are coming from generally the same profile that they would be. But it is going to vary from town to town. Sometimes we'll have a screener that may prohibit children, some towns may just let everybody in. So we are still looking for more guidance from the state on that. So the intent of that, of course, was to push the date so that our children would be a little bit older and a little bit more ready socially, cognitively, and emotionally, and perhaps, you know, maybe some of our special education referrals would decrease, and that does have an impact on our Board of Education budget. So the intent is good. The fact that a waiver process was stuck in at the last minute in an implementer bill may be not so helpful. So I also have exciting news I had shared with Beth and Tony earlier. We're excited to share that Beecher Road School is selected as an Apple Distinguished School for the years 2023 through 2026. This is a very rare award that's nominated from within, so we had our technology team work with some students to show how we can use technology, the Apple technology predominantly, to inspire and innovate, and very few, there's very few in Connecticut. We're not really supposed to share how many, but if you googled it, you would see there are very few in the United States. I think, I'm not even sure there's another one in Connecticut. There may be one other. So it's an honor. We are planning a kind of a big event on the 21st at nine. You'll receive some invitations, so you're welcome to come and join us and hear more about it. It's also on our website. We changed one of our main tabs. So if you check that tab, you could learn a little bit more and see our student-based videos on how we are an Apple Distinguished School and how we're using many of the Apple products to really push forward technology. This is a feather in the Woodbridge community's cap, of which you can proudly wave. So, and then finally, I saved it for last because it is very important to me. Veterans Day is a day that Woodbridge schools, and I'm pleased with this, are in school, right? It varies town to town, district to district. Some towns honor Veterans Day by not holding school. Woodbridge, I'm so proud, offers the day filled with activities for our learners to experience and interact with veterans in a variety of ways. So we will have an assembly in the morning. At this point, this is a school-based assembly. We're not inviting a lot of family members right now, but we will have honored guests. We will have veterans coming into some classrooms for some interview-based experiences and some hands-on learning. But the fact that we have members in our community and in our country who sacrifice their time away from their families to serve our country is exactly what makes us here. So saved it to last because it's important to appreciate those of you who have served and know somebody who does, and I just want you to know that our school takes it seriously, and we will be honoring that as well. That's my report.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Very informative report. Thank you.
Thanks. I thought I was all.
Thanks so much. Okay. Item three on the agenda is the Town Building Committee for Beecher Road School Capital Projects, and I will call on Selectman Sheila McRevin to give us an update.
Sure.
On good stuff moving forward.
Yes.
Finally, yes, yay.
It's for us to consider and move forward. So the Town Building Committee for the Beecher Capital Projects met on Friday. In your packet are the minutes and some documents that the committee was stepped through. We had all our questions answered about that. What we've got here is, there's actually two phases of the project. The first is the roof, very, very important. We need to move it forward in order to get in line for state reimbursement, and the selected vendor, SBNA, prepared two items to move this forward. One is the schematics, which is basically the plan of how the roof will be replaced in the areas that it will be replaced, and then the budget document, equally important. Both of those pieces were unanimously recommended by the building committee members to be brought to the Board of Selectmen tonight so that we might stay on track on our schedule to get this up to the state in a timely fashion. I believe David Stein has indicated that he is prepared to submit them right away. In fact, he was just emailing me right before the meeting started to ask if we've acted yet, and I said, we're in the meeting now. So if this Board of Selectmen would like to entertain that motion, if anyone's got any questions ahead of that, I'd be happy to talk about it. And then I can also give you an update on the other portion of the project, which is the grounds work, equally important. It is on a slightly different track in terms of being submitted to the state. It would be submitted under a different protocol of some sort. So the roof is important to move forward now, but the portion of the grounds work that we are going to try to do in tandem with the roof this summer has to go through a process of vetting that the Board of Education is now doing, and the superintendent and her team are looking at.
So that's why that's not in here?
Yes, it is not yet ready, and doesn't have to be submitted in the same portal where David Stein is submitting this. So part one is the roof, and you can see that the dollar amount that they're estimating is 1.4 million. That's without the reimbursement factor in yet, but we'll talk about it.
Do we have an estimate on what that might be? Do we know?
The reimbursement, 23%, something to that effect. For the portions that are reimbursable, there is a column all the way to the right on that spreadsheet, which is the third page in the packet, our ineligible write. That's a small portion.
To me, it's the handwriting part of it. Actually, this one was, one of these things I could not even, with a magnifying glass.
Well, the nice thing about meeting in the virtual environment, as we've all got it on our screen, we can see what's being discussed.
You gotta be kidding me.
Oh, it got really small.
It sure did get small.
Should have turned the other way.
I'm assuming it's all okay.
At any rate, so that's the portion that we have in front of us, but the Board of Ed is going to take a good look and get back to the building committee with some recommendations about the scope and sequence of the rest of the work.
We met actually this morning, September 30th, tonight. So we will have our recommendations to talk to our Board of Education about in the November 20th meeting, and then share with you.
Right. Yes, and one of the things we discussed at the building committee level is that there are some elements that can maybe be handled with the capital budget, just pay-as-you-go capital budget. So we're going to pretty much dovetail with the process of determining the capital budget and the operating budget, et cetera, going forward. So all good things to come with the rest of the project.
I'm very excited to read at the end of this letter. Key dates, this is David Stein, I'm assuming. Have a contractor onboard by the end of March, so work can begin on schedule at the close of the school year approach, and so that's very good. Good news.
That is our aim.
It's important to us that we can try to do it all in one summer, because each summer that it would take required us to rent space, probably a fascinating for our summer programs.
Yep. Good. So you need from us, I'll make a motion, then we could perhaps have further discussion. I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the plan and cost estimate materials as presented in attachment A. Is that all you need?
Yes.
Second, Joe. Okay. Anyone have any questions for maybe Vonda or Sheila?
I have a question. What does approving the plan mean? You said we're going to approve a plan.
Right. Approve it to be submitted to the state for consideration of reimbursement.
Okay. So we, could you walk me through that?
Sure, yeah. So the document in the packet from the minutes, there's various, there's the schematic and the budget document. The schematic is basically how they're going to go about doing the work to replace the roof, and it entails all the different pieces that they're doing. For example, they're putting in some ladders where the roof elevations differ. They're going to add five inches of insulation, which is going to help with our energy expenditures over there. There's a series of things. They had to change the pitch slightly. They're going to be addressing drains. They're going to make sure that the drains are adequately vented so that they can easily be maintained and we won't have clogged drains. So they're doing a series of improvements there on the roof. It's the kindergarten roof, it's the D-wing roof, and it's the media library center?
Yes, so the whole front and cafeteria.
And if you remember, that's the 1998 K-wing construction. So it's more than 20 years, close to 25.
And this is the whole roof? The entire roof?
This is one quarter of our building.
One quarter of the roof?
Of that wing, right. So it's the K-wing and the D-wing and the library media center. So it's about five years out of warranty now, right? Past its useful life, which, right? And that's a key factor in both getting the reimbursement, you need to, you don't want to take off a roof before the warranty is up. So the warranty is, we're well out of warranty. David Stein assured us that this new roof, once it's put in, will have a 20-year warranty going forward. So we're extending a 20-year life.
It's one quarter of one wing, is that what you, or just one quarter of the whole?
Quarter of the entire building.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Exactly.
Right. And none of this was touched in the renovation from 2016. This is a portion that wasn't past its useful life, so we did not address it.
Did your committee look at the other three quarters while this was going on?
So there's another piece down by the rotunda, and is it the S-wing at the end of the building? That was put on in 2005, something?
Right. So unless they hit their expiration, then they will be next.
In a couple of years.
In 2025, that will be 20 years out. So, and Vonda has mentioned to us in her past reports that the roof is, because it is so large, the building is so large, the roof is in sections, every 20 years, you need to replace the section, 20 to 25. We've got a few extra years out of this, but it is certainly time. And patching it was not the best way to go. So this complete replacement, which we now are going to be qualified for as long as we submit this to the state. So that's where we are tonight.
Right. And so what we're going to do is just, so this plan is just going to go to the state. That's what we're okaying up. Want to be clear?
Yeah.
So Sheila, this is an estimate of cost from Silver Pepper, so this hasn't gone out of bid yet?
No.
No.
No. It would need to...
It could be more, it could be less.
You probably, yeah, you have to, first, you have to have a bond authorization. There's a lot of steps to it.
Okay. But at the conclusion of that process, we'll have the vendor onboard, which David would like to have in March. So we're going to move quickly.
Anything else?
Sounds good.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second? All in favor? It's unanimous. Almost set anonymous. Okay, thank you for staying.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you for being here.
Thanks. Okay, item four on the agenda is the Administrative Officer Director of Finances Report. I'll call on Anthony Genovese.
Thank you.
One monthly report.
There's not much change from last month. We still, our expenses are projected at about 15 and a half percent of our, our fund balance, rather, will be projected at 15 and a half percent of our annual expenses for the end of the year. We have a surplus, budget surplus of about $550,000 projected, mainly coming from two sources. First is the retirement funds, and that's a conservative estimate, but we are estimating to save about $100,000. Could be a little higher in retirement costs due to restructuring of our state retirement plan, and we've been trying to restructure this plan for, God, 10 years at least, and so the controller, Scanlon, finally, he came in and he restructured the plan for us and saved us a lot of money. So we're thankful to him for that, and so that's a big plus for us, both police and town employees.
I had a note in my notes to say, I'm glad you did that, because you and I met several times with legislators and no one listened, at least for my six years.
At least a decade. We've been trying to change this.
And finally, our new controller actually stepped up and listened and did something to help us, and this is, it was killing us, so.
So there, so that was a plus.
Yeah, so I want to make a note in the minutes thanking him for doing that.
The second is a surplus of AMITI as reported at $451,000. Those are the two major items so far this year.
If I have any questions for Tony on that? Okay, funding requests. First one, just a...
There's just one?
Yeah. Wait a minute. I went too far, sorry. We have before us line item transfer number 2324-09 in the amount of $6,500. Once again, I applaud that it's a line item transfer. Departments are paying attention and moving money within their departments rather than going to contingency or other items. And this is for the cost of busing to the Woodbridge Pool Club. They had to use, the Beecher Road School pool, as you know, was closed, so they had to have busing to take the kids, I think it was a summer program, right?
Correct.
Over to the Woodbridge Pool?
Yeah, Woodbridge Club.
Woodbridge Club, right. Yeah, on Melhaven Road. So there's a cost, and they found it in part-time seasonal, $6,500 to programs and publicity. So I will motion acceptance of line item transfer 2324-09 in the amount of 6,500. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. Now we go to the bid waiver. Morton Salt. I love it. Every year. Okay, maybe you want to explain this. It's pretty straightforward.
So each year, we use Morton Salt. It's called Blizzard Wizard, and it's a particular type of treated salt that works well in the environment here in Woodbridge, and so we would like, it's a sole-source vendor, made only by Morton Salt, and so we would like to seek a bid waiver to purchase that from Morton at $91.31 per ton.
Second.
And good news, the cost went down from last year.
Right.
Yay. Okay, I will motion that we approve a bid waiver for this year to obtain 600 tons of bulk Blizzard Wizard at a cost of $91.31 per ton for an initial total of $54,786. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on this one? Go ahead.
Tony, what do we base this tonnage on?
It's an initial volume of tonnage to satisfy a average winter.
Average winter.
Yeah, probably slightly less than an average winter. And as the winter progresses, if we start to have more storms, Warren will order more salt. But we have a salt shed, so we can keep it preserved and undercover, and so it maintains the pile without having it, you know, the weather and environment. Yeah. So it's important to, every once in a while, we have a problem with salt. It hasn't happened in a few years, but commodity issues, and salt's hard to get, so we like to purchase it in advance, stockpile it in our salt shed, so if that happens, we don't have to worry about getting salt. One time, a literally, a salt truck was pulling into the driveway the day of a storm. I mean, that was the closest we got, not having salt.
Wow.
That was maybe six or seven years ago. It was a big problem with salt.
That would be an issue.
What's that?
That'd be kind of an issue.
Yeah.
A little girl in a shawl shaker can't handle a very much, you know, before out there. Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
Stop a shop.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Okay. You have a motion, a second? Me and Paul?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. And that's that. Any other other?
That's it.
Okay, wonderful. Item five on the agenda is Assistant Administrative Officer's Report. I'll turn to our Assistant Administrative Officer, Karen Crosby.
Thanks, Beth. Since we last met, we've submitted the renewal application for HeartSafe Community, and we received notification that our designation has been renewed. I'm continuing to assist the Finance Department with the FY '23 audit, working with Tony on the submission of the adopted budget document to GFOA for the Distinguished Budget Award, working with Adam Parsons, and completed the purchase and planting of the two final trees at the Fitzgerald property, and we're working to get quotes on the plaques that will go along with those trees. I'm continuing to work with the Safety Committee, and we'll be setting up training for AED for the locations and how to operate them, as well as I'll be setting up training for the Stop the Bleed bags that we purchased. I'm assisting Tony, I assisted Tony on the online capital budget. I'm assisting Tony, I assisted Tony on the online capital budget training session for the department heads, and I've been meeting with human services, the library, and recreation department to review policies and fees for the rental of town meeting rooms. And I'm scheduled for CHRO training, which is the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities for the recently awarded Steve Grant.
So this year, our capital budget will be online, similar to the operating budget last year. So for those that are interested, you can get an online version of our capital budget.
Great.
Pretty exciting.
And I do wanna thank Karen.
For us, anyway.
Very much.
That's not my definition of excitement, darling, I mean.
You're really good with excitement, aren't you? I, I do wanna thank Karen for all your hard work on this application. And this is what it, we got, and we're gonna get it framed and put it up. This is the award for making us a heart-safe community. I believe it's, she said, three years?
Yes.
So you did a really good job on that. It took a lot of paperwork, it was.
Thank you.
Buckets and buckets of papers, 'cause I looked it over, so.
Joe helped her store it down.
Oh, wow.
That's right.
Yeah, wow, yeah. So thank you for that, Karen. Good job. Any questions for Karen? Nope, okay, great. Let's see. We can wait till 6 o'clock for public comments. If anyone who's in the audience have any public comments at this point? Nope, okay, thanks, guys. Item seven on the agenda is the consent agenda and actions appropriate tax refunds. Town clerks report minutes of October 11th, and it was only one request to hold an event on town property. So I will make, move acceptance of the consent agenda that's in your packet unless someone, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anyone have any things they wanna pull out?
Who is the second?
Joe.
Joe, okay.
Yeah. I'm hoping you all had a chance to go through it. Anyone have any comments or questions on anything? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Thanks. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an appointment to Town Plan and Zoning Commission to December 31st, 2025. What number is that? Number eight?
I'm reading.
We have a vacancy that's been there for a while on TPZ. Anyone have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Benjamin Cherry.
Thank you. Guys have any nominations? We sent it out last week.
Yeah.
No? Okay. Alrighty. Oh, we need a second, sorry. Thank you, Joe, I heard you, sorry. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor of appointing to December 31st, 2025, Benjamin Cherry to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Hope, you wanna talk? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have some questions toward the motion.
Yep.
The TPZ, as I understand it, is party to the lawsuit that we're getting engaged, that we've been engaged with right now? Isn't, is that not the case? I guess I'd have to ask Jerry. Is, is it against us and?
No, it's against the town. It's against the town. I don't believe that TPZ is naming a lawsuit.
They were part of that appeal, I think. They, they, they were part of the original complaint about the Orchard Road.
They handle the change of the zone, the zone change that preceded, that they were involved in. I, I'm not 100% sure, I wish I had it. But I don't, they may be, I don't think they are, but I, I could be wrong.
Yeah, I, I just thought at one point we, that was mentioned in one of our meetings.
It's possible, it's, and now that I think about it, I could probably pull it up if I had a few minutes.
Yeah, I just wondered what that, what that did to the, I mean.
What's the question? Assuming, assuming we are, assuming they are, what, what significance?
Well, I just wondered if there was any significance to being involved with, you know, people who either might want to be on the TPZ or if they're, I'm assuming, of course, there's no personal liability on their part, but it might mean a very different level of activity for TPZ than what would be just a normal activity.
Well, the TPZ members who were in, on the, on the board at the time, decisions were made on zoning, on requests, on applications either for housing or what have you. They could be witnesses, but if somebody joins after the circumstances set out in the complaint, then they wouldn't be witnesses, 'cause they have no knowledge, so.
Right.
The, the, the facts and circumstances of the complaint stopped upon the filing of the complaint, and anything going forward, new people could, could have some obligation to testify, but they wouldn't have any obligations on events that are called prior to the filing of the complaint. So I don't think there's a problem.
So you don't think we need to sort of reconsider? But it might make, it might take more time or something? I, I don't know if that's.
No, I don't think so. It might take time for some people who could be called for depositions, that could, that could happen.
And the only, I guess the only other thing, Beth, that I had for this was that, you know, I recognize that, read the, read the resume, understood part of it, and I don't, I, you know, it doesn't really relate particularly in any way that I could figure out with zoning. But I, I kinda think since maybe a month or so from now, the new team's gonna do all of these, all the boards and commissions open spots, that maybe it would be better for us just to leave it to the new leadership to come in, and Sheila and I will be back on the board, but, you know, when they're considering all of their constructing of the boards and commissions and the, and the new places, I only see one meeting that TPZ is gonna have between now and then. So why wouldn't we want to just allow, allow it to go that way instead of putting somebody in now for a two-year term? But that would be my question, if, maybe somebody has an answer to that.
I don't have an answer, but I think it's okay to put him on. There's been a vacancy for a while there, so I think we should move forward. So he came forward a while ago, and it took us a while to get this done, so. Anybody have any other comments? Okay, thank you.
I was just mainly thinking that, you know, the normal process is just about to begin. We haven't had, if it hasn't hamstrung the TPZ up to this point, it seems like it ought all just come in when the whole thing is being considered.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Well, us making the appointment is part of the normal process, is the normal process.
No, I get that, but I'm, I'm just saying that I know in about a month, there's gonna be a whole process for all the boards and commissions.
Absolutely.
Holistically.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But when we accepted a term as elected officials.
Mm-hmm.
We accepted a, a term for the full term, and we have to do, we have to fulfill our obligations for the full term, including this month and next month.
That's, that's your view, yeah?
Yeah, okay. So with that, we'll.
The, the counter view to that, Paul, would have been that instead of sitting around on these vacancies, we should actually act, not just when the leadership party has a candidate, but we should act based on just getting a candidate put forward. And we haven't been doing it that way, so.
Yeah, I disagree.
Well, it's, it's your right to disagree.
Well.
I could disagree too, but I'd be wrong also.
You used that line on me last, last month.
Really?
Yeah. That's a pat line.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second? I'll call the question. Up.
No, just a point of order. Town council is not part of the deliberation, so I would appreciate his side comments not to be heard. If we have questions of him, it's appropriate for him to talk, but not otherwise at the table.
If I agree with you, then we both be wrong.
Okay, left side, we're done. Let's call the question. All in favor? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, and with that, we'll move on to.
I just wanna say something, Beth. I do have the complaint here that you referenced before, and yes, that TPZ is a defendant together with the town of Woodbridge. So the complaint was here because I had the David Lober FOI case, so you were correct there.
Well, that's a good segue, Jerry, 'cause we're up to number nine, Town Council's report.
So all I, on the Town Council's report, there are two issues. The first issue is, I just wanna report that we had a final decision from the Freedom of Information Commission on the Lober versus First Selectment of the Town of Woodbridge, Town Attorney and Town, Town of Woodbridge complaint by David Lober. The last meeting, I indicated that the hearing examiner found in favor of the town, Beth and myself, and found that the case should be dismissed. Her decision has to be approved by the full commission, and on October 11th, the full commission issued its decision approving 100% of the hearing examiner's findings and dismissed the case in its entirety. As you remember, the Country Club of Woodbridge was a very big topic in that piece of litigation that was filed by Mr. Lober. It's over, it's finished. I think we've spent at least $6,000, Tony, $7,000 in council fees, but I'm happy to report that it is no longer an issue for the town. I indicated last, last month that there were allegations of fraud on the part of me and Beth, and we're gonna have to figure out whether, if there's anything to be done about that. But that case is done as far as the town is concerned. I'm happy to, I'm happy that's over. Good, that's it.
That's all for your report?
Yep.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is item 10, executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-200, Fran 6, Ms. B, negotiations of pending claim regarding First Church of Christ and Woodbridge tax assessment. So I will make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to that, to that, to that reading, and I would invite in the full Board of Selectmen, obviously, Tony Genovese and Jerry Weiner. Is that it? That's all we needed here?
That's, that's it.
And everybody else can go home, I guess.
Can I ask about?
Is there, I'll make that motion.
Will we come out and go to public hearing if there is any?
Public comments.
I mean, public comments, sorry.
Sure.
Public comments if there isn't.
We, we'll come back at the end, and if people here will bite them for public comments.
Just to be clear, I wouldn't wanna turn off those TV sets all over America.
Stay tuned.
Who seconded Beth's?
I did it, and who seconded it?
Sheila, thank you.
I heard a voice. Thank you, good night.
And this was five.
Oh, I, all in favor? Thank you.
Beth, what's that, no, we have my time to come.
Everyone, we're now out of executive session. There were no motions made nor votes taken during the executive session. And last on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
Public comment?
Oh.
Yeah, public comments.
I guess we can call for public comment. Is there any public here? No, there is not. Thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Joe.
Second.
Thanks, Sheila. Undebatable? Thank you, we are adjourned at 6:00.
I guess.
Three.
You have women's basketball game.